From St. Louis Public Radio. This is Politically Speaking.
There's little debate that school districts have made some of the most consequential and controversial decisions during the COVID-19 pandemic. And the people making these choices are members of school boards that have to juggle their public responsibilities with their daily lives. On this edition of Politically Speaking, St. Louis Public Radio's Kate Grumke joins me to interview three St. Louis County School Board members about what they've learned over the past two years and what their decisions that they made over the COVID-19 pandemic may foretell for the future. Let's hit the music.
This is the Politically Speaking Podcast, the definitive show about Missouri politics.
We have to talk about things that matter to people.
I've tried to bring that same aggressive iconoclast style with me to the United States Senate.
I think my district is a model for the state.
We put Missourians first.
You just kind of have to find the common ground with people.
I believe that this district deserves someone who represents their values.
After I came back to St. Louis, I started thinking that I could have a bigger role on the change that I wanted to make.
And welcome to Politically Speaking. I'm your host, St. Louis Public Radio political correspondent, Jason Rosenbaum. Before we talk with our guest today, I wanted to introduce my special co-host for this episode.
Hi, I'm Kate Grumke. I'm St. Louis Public Radio's new education reporter, and I just moved to St. Louis after five years in Washington, D.C., covering politics and policy. So I am a longtime listener, first time co-host of this podcast.
We are thrilled to have you. With the addition of you, Sarah Kellogg, and Brian Munoz, I feel like we are enhancing St. Louis Public Radio's firepower to make us into a journalistic juggernaut. You are from the St. Louis area originally. Is that the reason you were drawn to come and work at this station?
Yeah, so I still have a lot of family in the area. I went to the University of Missouri, so I love St. Louis. I love this entire region, and I've been looking for a reason to come back for a while, so this job is really exciting.
So your background is working on a lot of political stories, but education and politics seem to have converged into like this amorphous blob. So how do you think you're going to approach this job, which typically had a political element to it, but now is like supercharged with politics because of COVID-19?
Yeah, it's been really interesting. I kind of thought I was leaving politics, but it's definitely a huge part of the education beat. So I think I'm approaching this as I would covering any government entity. So at the end of the day, the schools still are kind of a government entity, and they have to take into account what their different constituencies care about. In this case, it's their staff, their parents, the students themselves. So I think still just kind of balancing those different stakeholders.
Now, you've really hit the ground running so far. In a few short weeks, you've interviewed the Education Secretary of America, and you also did a feature on books that are being removed from school libraries. What's been your initial reporting subject matters? And what are going to be some issues you're going to be reporting on in the future?
Yeah, so I did the story on the attempt to permanently remove books from school libraries. I think we're going to be continuing to cover that issue and also just parents kind of weighing in on what they want to be taught in schools. I feel like that's going to be something for at least the next year. And then obviously, I'll still be covering how the pandemic is affecting learning. We know that we have this big education gap that showed up during virtual learning, so that's going to be a big topic. And also kind of how will policies change as we roll out more vaccines, testing? Are we going to get to take off those masks in schools? I think answering questions like that will be the goal for the next few months.
So all of those topics wrap into our actual show, and we are going to be talking with three school board members from the Maplewood-Richmond Heights School District, the Jennings School District, and the Parkway School District. We'll be having that conversation right after this break. And joining us on this episode of Politically Speaking are actually three school board members from the St. Louis area. The first guest that we have, she is a member of the Jennings School Board.
Thank you for having me, Miranda Jones.
Our second guest is a member of the Parkway School Board.
Hi, I'm Kristi Klein-Davis. Thanks for having me as well.
And our third guest is a member of the Maplewood-Richmond Heights School Board, which for full disclosure, is the school board where I send my children to.
Good to be with you, Jason. This is Katie Kaufman.
I want to start off by playing a clip of State Representative Doug Ritchie. He is a Republican from Clay County, Missouri, and he had these words to say about how he feels that school boards should change in these "uncertain times."
You can't operate business as usual when the very community and the parents that make up that community that once supported you and loved you are now really upset with you. To continue functioning in that fashion only serves to increase their angst. It doesn't alleviate it. So what has happened? School boards will get together, they'll meet, and it in many respects helps to preserve the superintendent as the primary voice of the district because school board members aren't speaking specifically to matters within the public comment period, or quite frankly, even during the board meeting itself. But I think that what we now need to recapture for the benefit of regaining trust is that school board members are locally elected individuals to sit on a public entities board to make sure that the public school district is functioning the way that it should and that it's spending tax dollars properly.
Obviously, he is a member of the state legislature. He has his own perspective. I'd be interested to hear what you three have to say about what he has to say and about the role of public comment in your very difficult decision-making over the last year.
Yeah, this is Katie. Thanks, Jason. So I heard parts of Rep. Ritchie's appearance on the radio myself, and you know, my first reaction was that I didn't think that his comments accurately reflected the reality that our school boards, at least in St. Louis County, have been experiencing over the last year and a half plus. Most folks have not always showed up, whether it's the teachers or the elected officials or the parents, as our very best selves. But I think that we've all done what we can to address that there have been a lot of challenges. And I think really the school districts in St. Louis County have worked really well to be creative and to try to work together to share the best, you know, experiments that are happening and, you know, really, really try to do what was best for kids and for our employees. And so, you know, again, yes, this is a time of transition still and rebuilding what it means to be community. But I really, you know, took some issue with the characterization of school boards as losing trust or being out of touch with our communities during this time.
Our public comments at our meetings are one point in time and one way that we engage our public for feedback on how our schools are doing and how we're doing. We also received tens of thousands of emails over the course of COVID. Every single one of those emails that came to board members in Parkway got a response. We also have voicemail boxes. We got voicemails. We responded to those. You know, we did surveys of our families. Some people don't want to individually show up to a meeting and make public comment or individually send an email, but they'll respond to a survey. And in a recent one, over 80% of our constituents responded that they were either happy or very happy with how the district had handled COVID. And we're really proud of that. Now, there's 20% that didn't say they were happy or very happy, and those people and their perspectives absolutely matter too. That's part of the process. But I think it is unfair to say that our community doesn't trust us or that our community thinks we haven't done a good job because what we're hearing doesn't match that. And again, yes, there are absolutely people that don't agree with every decision we've made, and it's really important for us to hear from them too. And we have had open, respectful meetings, discussions in Parkway this entire time, and we're really proud of that and plan to continue to do that.
And I guess I weigh in as well. This is Miranda from Jennings. Our parents have always been a part of the process, but they don't come to board meetings and they don't necessarily do the public comment. We have our parent council, you know, we have an open door policy, so we get lots of calls. And I will tell you, our board is a part of the community and a part of the school district, so we hear it every day, all day, because my board members are in the schools, they're at the meetings. A lot of them are city council members, so they're very, very in touch in our small community. And, you know, for us, you know, the misinformation that came out initially about how COVID was spread, where the testing was, you know, our schools and our parents and our teachers really relied on us to do what was right and do what was best. And initially, we didn't think it would even affect Jennings because, you know, we were thinking, we're so insulated, this won't affect us. And then the very first person that died in St. Louis City was indeed a graduate of Jennings. And so for us, it became really serious really fast. And so for us, there was no, there was no time for us to not react. We had to react effectively and very quickly and still be able to keep in mind the safety of our children, not only keeping them in school and keeping them together, but what happens if kids are not in school as well. So there were so many things to balance, and it was not us being out of touch at all. I think that it's very much the opposite. Our community really does trust us, and they put us here for a reason. And we did what we had to do as board members to make sure that our community is safe.
And obviously, as kind of the tone at school board meetings has shifted, especially in public comment, the stakes of the decisions were also greatly elevated in the last two years of the pandemic. Do you all feel like you knew what you were signing up for here?
I would say most folks I know who, you know, joined school boards, joined it because they just wanted to make their community better or, you know, maintain the, you know, really excellent levels of achievement that they saw happening. There are certainly folks, you know, of the dozens of school board members that I know personally, you know, folks who signed up because of maybe a particular challenge that their own child faced, you know, struggling with a learning disability or, you know, being a target for bullying or something like that, you know, that somebody would want to elevate an issue at the school board level. But, you know, I think nobody knew what they were getting into with this pandemic. I mean, I've talked to CEOs of organizations across the region who said, you know, I don't know how to lead through the last year and a half. Certainly, our superintendents were presented with something that they never studied in school or, you know, in their, in their many, you know, professional developments on how to lead a district. And yeah, I mean, we're just residents of the community. We all have other day jobs. Some folks fortunately have backgrounds in science or health. Some folks have backgrounds in education or, you know, nonprofit management or things like that. So, you know, again, I think we all just really relied on the expertise that the group brings to the work, but also leaned really heavily appropriately, and, you know, in my opinion, on the experts in our community, the St. Louis County Health Department. God bless those folks. And, you know, the information that they were sharing with us and our districts on a, you know, regular basis. And, you know, and again, trying to make sense of the CDC recommendations as they pertain to schools and to education settings and to our particular community's conditions.
I will say, I've been on the board now going on 18 years, and this is exactly what I signed up for. Because when I joined the board, it was in times of great struggle and challenges in that, you know, we got, you know, I got on the board because I wanted to be there to make a difference and to give my best self to the community. And we've had so many struggles and challenges over the years. You know, when you're looking at our test scores and trying to get our graduation rate up and those things that we had to do to educate our children, that this is one of those things that nobody knew. Nobody knew what was coming. Nobody knew how to handle it. We had to shift and pivot. We were all ballerinas. We were pivoting so much throughout this last two years. And so this is, you know, this is exactly the place that, you know, I never really wanted to be making this kind of decision, but was prepared as a body and as a whole. And I feel like our board together has been trained to make decisions together as a whole and everybody's voice be recognized and heard with the backdrop of making sure that we're listening to our community and responding effectively to our community.
I'm going to go around the panel and just ask, when did your school districts fully reopen for in-person learning?
In Maplewood, Richmond Heights, I think it's pretty well-known that we took an extremely cautious approach, and we did not reopen for, you know, in-person classes until the second semester of the 2020 school year. And really, you know, it took us, we were on a modified schedule initially and didn't come back fully until very close to the end of last school year.
This is Kristi in Parkway. I had to think about it because time is such a blur right now.
Yeah, it seems like, yeah, time is a relative thing now.
We started bringing our students back in a hybrid manner last fall, so we had half the class, two days a week, half the class, and the other days and one fully virtual day. By last spring, we had our kids back four days a week. We used Mondays to live as virtual days. And then this past fall, so fall of 2021 is when we were back five days a week. I do want to add, though, that we have added a virtual campus. So we run a full, essentially separate elementary, middle, and high school that's 100% virtual for those families that weren't feeling comfortable yet, you know, coming back to school in person. Or, you know, we did have students who found that the virtual learning environment was best for them. And so as a district, you know, we serve our community, so we also continue to run a virtual campus for those families that want that fully virtual education.
So we kind of went off course a little bit because we started very quickly with having a modified summer schedule because we know our kids needed it. One of the things that we have to look at is safety of the kids at home as well as, you know, being together, you know, on our campus. And so we went on and tried to do a modified summer schedule because we needed, we know we had kids that needed to be there just because of our parents working and them, you know, not having what they needed necessarily at home. And so we started right away, but we were very creative. We had little boxes for teachers to teach in, and, you know, we had the, you know, all kinds of screens. And then we started in the fall. We started with a modified schedule as well, but we pushed really hard to get our kids in school pretty quickly.
So I'm interested to hear what the response of parents were to remote learning. And I'll be, I'll just be very blunt. I agreed with MRH's decision not to reopen in October because the superintendent didn't seem to have a plan, but remote learning did not really work for my son. But I could imagine that it worked better for other kids depending on their situation. So I'm interested to hear like what the reaction was among parents to this new reality.
And I first want to acknowledge and recognize our teacher, who I think did an exceptional, exceptional job moving to remote learning for their students. That was not easy. Not just our teachers, our administrators as well, our curriculum developers, et cetera. So I want to acknowledge them and give them all the due credit here. It was a mixed bag in terms of parent response to virtual learning because our kids are diverse and our communities are diverse. So it really depended. We had some families that absolutely loved it. We had some families that absolutely hated it, and we had some kids that did great and some kids that didn't. It was a real mixed bag. You know, I have, my daughter was in kindergarten in 2020, so she's gone through kindergarten first and now second grade. Kindergarten's a pretty rough age for, you know, virtual learning. Jason, I don't know the ages of your kids.
My son was six, but also I just need to point out, my son has an IEP, so he's not, he's not like everybody else.
Yeah, well, you know, what kid is like everybody else, right? Jason, you're kidding me.
He is, but he's under, but his needs are a lot different than somebody without an IEP, so I want to make that clear when I say that.
Yes. Yeah, and I mean, that's where I think some of our biggest challenges were. How do we meet the needs of unique learners in this virtual setting? And for some kids, it does not work. And for some kids, it works great. So parent response was really a pretty mixed, was really, was really pretty mixed.
This is Miranda. I have three children and I have my nephew. So I had, in 2020, I had a high school senior, I had a middle schooler, and I had an elementary school, and then I added my nephew, who's another middle schooler. So I had every level at home, homeschooling, which was very, very fun and very, that's why I'm like blocked that whole last year.
Oh, I don't blame you. That is amazing. I want to salute you.
But I will say this, I thought right before, you know, things started, you know, getting, you know, where we were all homeschooling, had a conversation with the kids about their learning style. And I thought my nephew, who is gifted and, you know, he thrives well by himself, I thought that he would be the one that would excel. And he was the one that had the most problems because he was, he needed that social interaction. His mom was in the healthcare industry, and there was just no way that she can do healthcare and be, you know, in that situation and still care for her son at home, homeschooling him. And so we made the decision as a family, so we, you know, we had to do what we had to do. And parents were struggling with, you know, those jobs that were, you know, the frontline jobs. If you're working in healthcare, if you're a teacher yourself, if you're working, you know, in any of these service industries, and a lot of people in our district are frontline workers. And so we had to rise to the unique challenge of trying to figure out how to give them as much support as they needed. So when you say a mixed bag, was definitely a mixed bag, but I mean, they understood. They understood that this is what absolutely must be done at this point. And kudos to Dr. Art McCoy, who was our superintendent at the time, because he had, you know, it's been statements on everything. If this doesn't work for this kid, then we'll do this. And the teachers responded, and I know at times, I remember turning off the camera and the teacher forgot to turn off the camera, and one was in tears because she wants to be with her baby. She wants to touch her children. This is an elementary school teacher, and she's been a teacher for 20 years. So the workforce, you know, especially those veteran teachers, you know, had a really tough time pivoting to this virtual, you know, reality that we were in. And parents, you know, I think they had to understand and know that this, you know, this is, we had no alternative at the time that we were all 100% virtual.
Yeah, again, in Maplewood, I think we, you know, like everybody else, did the best we could. And I echo Kristi and Miranda's comments. Our teachers really rose to the occasion, our administrators, our, you know, counselors who did porch visits with kids who, you know, needed services. And it wasn't, it wasn't the same. It wasn't enough. And I think that is something that I hope that folks, you know, who didn't go through this as a decision-maker can at least know that every one of the decisions that I made, you know, I weighed it and I weighed it, and I knew that there would be consequences. And, you know, I chose to prioritize safety over a, you know, just plow forward and meet the standards at the, you know, exact same intensity as we always have. And, you know, again, we're going to, we're going to academically as well as socially and emotionally be remediating from the past year and a half for years. And again, hopefully, we can, we can continue to do that in partnership with, you know, with the state. You know, we're waiting on some of the relief money to be allocated by our state legislature right now, right? Like, there are services that school districts around the region have teed up, and we would like to start, you know, putting into place to do some of this academic catch-up or behavioral health support or social, emotional learning development for kids. And, you know, to be fiscally responsible, we got to wait till we know we're going to get that money from the state. And if the state's got the money, we just, you know, need those folks to give us the green light to be able to start, start doing those things.
Yeah, and I'd like to hear from each of you, looking back at the last year, remote learning, what's one thing that you think should be incorporated permanently in schools? And what's one thing that you want to throw out and never do again?
Throw into the proverbial volcano, basically.
Yeah.
Well, there are no more snow days. We have no excuse now. So I think that, you know, we actually talked about that recently. We were talking about our built-in snow days, and we said, well, do we really need to have a snow day now? Because everybody knows how to do remote learning. So I think, you know, a lot of some, you know, if there are some situations where we need to be remote, I think we know how to do it now. And I don't know what we should throw out yet. Still thinking about that one.
I mean, the obvious is throughout COVID, like, let's get this, let's get this behind us.
Good answer, Kristi. Good answer.
Well, yeah, yeah, that actually is, that's a great segue to my next question. You know, we are in a different spot than we were last year. We have kids who are getting vaccines right now. My oldest son has gotten the first shot. He's getting the second shot by the time this airs. We're going to have the advent of this COVID pill that is going to substantially reduce hospitalizations, hopefully. So what do you think this means going forward for some of these decision-making? I think it probably will change how quarantines happen, but it also probably will change the calculus about masking depending on what happens going forward. How do these advances change your decision-making going forward?
I think we're watching the data because I'm still in a community that has a lot of vaccine hesitancy. So if we only get 20% of the kids that actually get a vaccine, then that's going to drive our decision. So we're, you know, we're really looking at the data. We're looking at, you know, what it looks like. I will say that, you know, we decided not to do any kind of mandate for our teachers, a vaccine mandate. We just had a conversation with our staff and with our administration and said, okay, where are you all? Where are we going to be? And I will proudly report that, you know, as of, you know, a couple of days ago, we only had three people that didn't have a plan in place. And, you know, without having to do the mandate because they understand how important it is and they want to keep, you know, keep moving forward. So I think, again, for us, you know, we're hopeful that we will get the vaccination rate that we want to see in our district and that therefore we can start looking at the mask mandate and all the other remediations, but the data will tell.
Our goal is, has been, will be to keep kids in school and learning. Our goal is to keep kids in school five days a week. I do think that the vaccine being available to our youngest learners is a game changer. I do think that our community members who are comfortable doing so, taking advantage of the vaccine for their kids, will help us move closer to that quote-unquote "normal" that we're looking for. Parkway is offering vaccine clinics to our community, again, for parents that choose the vaccine for their children. The day that we announced our five-to-11-year-old clinic, we had over 5,000, or over 3,000 families within a couple hours indicate interest in that event. So I think our community is ready to move forward. As Miranda said, we're going to keep watching the data, but I do believe that now that parents have the choice to vaccinate their students, that makes a difference in terms of how we think about keeping kids in school, keeping our schools open five days a week, and continuing to educate our kids.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I hope sticks around long-term is adults and kids not coming to school sick with anything, you know? I think just the fact that we're so much more cognizant of, you know, am I, is my throat feeling a little scratchy or, you know? And certainly, all of the hand hygiene that happens. I have a kindergarten student and, you know, just that age group obviously is a little bit known for their germiness. So, you know, like generally, glad that that's a practice that really seems to be well-adopted by families and, you know, communities, I think, during this time. In MRH, we've had the, you know, the good fortune of having a community that is very, you know, vaccine acceptance, accepting. And so we have collected voluntary data from our students in the, you know, the 12 and older range. And just at our last school board meeting, saw that we have 57% of kids in that age range that have, you know, volunteered, that they are fully vaccinated. We obviously don't have information on that for our five-to-12-year-olds yet, but it seems from social media that we're getting a lot of families who are expressing their relief and their gratitude for the opportunity to get their kids vaccinated. And I think to, you know, to Kristi's point, and we want to keep kids in school, we want to keep kids safe, we want to make sure that we're contributing to a healthy, broader community too. And so I do think as we get more information about the numbers of families who have vaccinated their children, knowing that we have a very high rate of staff vaccination as well, that we will be able to consider, you know, a day when we won't have to wear masks in school. I don't know when that day will be, and hopefully it is sooner rather than later, but we probably can at least see it on the horizon at this point.
And even without vaccines fully rolled out, there is the option to do the test to stay. And I think our... And I think our St. Louis On The Air team has been covering this really well, kind of talking about how this hasn't rolled out in a lot of districts yet. So I'm curious, are your districts doing the test to stay where students can be tested every week and don't necessarily have to quarantine if they're doing it that way? And if you don't have that program in place, what's the hesitation there?
We had a conversation at our most recent school board meeting about test to stay. And I think for us, the, the challenge in, in a small school district is that we just don't have the, the staff capacity to do it. Um, our, our school nurses, and we actually even added a school nurse this year, um, are, you know, fully committed to, you know, working with our kids that have just, you know, chronic conditions that they may be managing, whether it's asthma or, you know, something else. And, um, working with our kiddos who develop illnesses at school. Um, so we, we just simply don't have the capacity. I, I believe there is some talk about maybe, um, you know, again, group, uh, uh, group, um, you know, processing for these sorts of things. So, you know, maybe there's, there's going to be some, um, lifting of the infrastructures to make it easier for, for school districts around the region to participate. But we, you know, I think it's, it would certainly be a good option. It's just not an, an extra responsibility that we feel like we can add to our, our school nurses' plates right now.
And Katie, this is where a small and a large district or perhaps similar, um, we, we feel the same way. Our nurses have been working so, so hard and they, we, they, we just cannot, we just cannot add to their place in addition to their standard responsibilities as school nurses, which were already significant. They're doing contact tracing when we do have, um, when we do have issues of kids or teachers testing positive, that's just positive. So we agree, it's just not something that we feel like we can reasonably take on as a school district right now.
And, and Jennings, we've been discussing it. We are lucky to have really great partners. We have clinics inside of our schools, which helps tremendously take the weight off of school nurses. So that, that helps us tremendously. And we do offer tests to stay, um, as for our teachers right now. So they, we have weekly testing available, um, on a Monday morning right there. They can get tested if they had not had the vaccine. So we're definitely doing it for our staff and teachers now. And since the vaccine just rolled out for our children, we haven't kind of gotten to the test to stay for the kids yet. Uh, we do offer testing on-site for children if they have, you know, they've been, um, exposed or if they're having any symptoms. In fact, we'll even go to their house and test the whole family if necessary. So we have a mobile unit as well. So, you know, we're pretty aggressive just, just because we have these built-in partners that we know that we have to be able to respond in several different ways, rather that's going to their house to make sure that everyone is tested as well.
In the last few minutes that we have, I want to shift to another thing that has been top of mind at some school board meetings, which is, I think, this backlash of what I broadly call diversity curriculum. I'm not calling it critical race theory curriculum because I don't think critical race theory is taught at any schools. But I think that the argument that's being put forth by the parents that are bringing that up is that elements of that are being infused into the curriculum. Um, that is their argument, not mine. Has this been an issue at any of your school districts?
Jason, you are absolutely correct. We do not teach critical race theory in Parkway. Um, but equity has been part of our curriculum and our work for, for decades. You know, we're responsible for preparing students to thrive in a dynamic and in a changing world. So our graduates have got to be able to have discussions, recognize perspectives, life experiences, histories that are different than the ones that they hold. So our teachers are skilled and work hard to help kids learn how to sit in a room with people that have different views than their own, have intelligent discussions, hear those views, share their own views and be in community with people. Because we think that that's what it takes, will take for them to be successful beyond their time in our school district. So no, we do not teach critical race theory, but yes, we do help our kids learn how to engage with perspectives, roleviews and histories that are different than the ones that they and their families have experienced.
And I, and I will say in Jennings, this is Miranda, we don't teach critical race theory. We teach history, which cannot be changed or erased or modified. And we teach all of the history and we have discussions about that history. So, you know, whatever label that, you know, we want to give, you know, that, um, you know, uh, we don't subscribe to the critical race theory, theory about critical race theory. We teach history and we teach it from all, all unique perspectives, especially history that is, um, germane to the children that we serve. So for us, it, it has not been an issue aside from hearing about everyone else, you know, having it be an issue. And, you know, quite frankly, you know, sometimes it feels a little, uh, it, it, it's tough for us to swallow because we want to make sure that history is being taught. And far too often, we know that the history and correct history has not been taught. And now, you know, is this label going to stop the history and diversity and equity being taught to still, to students all over the world that need to know views, um, views that are different from, you know, from their own? So, you know, um, it hasn't been a district issue for us. I will say that again. Um, however, you know, we are watching and, and we are concerned that, you know, our children, when they go, you know, to secondary education or when they go to college, are they going to get taught a full history because of this, this language that may be skewing really teaching history?
Yeah. And in MRH, um, while we haven't had any, you know, any real challenges from, from parents about our curriculum in general, I mean, I think, you know, we're always looking at ways to improve and, um, incorporate more perspectives and, um, and, you know, as, as, as both of my colleagues said, you know, really make sure that we're preparing today's students for, you know, the world of tomorrow, which, um, right, is, is diverse and is, uh, changing and is, um, you know, exciting. And the thing that, you know, I've really been concerned about, you know, again, I'm, I'm not being, I'm not being, um, you know, personally attacked during school board meetings or, you know, things like that. But when public schools are being attacked, it's bad for all of us. Um, you know, public education is a public good and it is so incredibly important. I worry about how we are being politicized, usually by folks who are in political positions. School board elections are nonpartisan in, in Missouri. We are all citizens, um, with our own particular, you know, beliefs and views, um, but we are not, you know, an R or a D when we are in, um, you know, the school board meeting room. And, um, I, I think that that is important. You know, all, all kids, all families have access to this amazing resource in our communities. And, um, you know, folks who are trying to use, um, you know, political agendas to, to tear that down, it's, it's very, very concerning for the, the state of the world. Um, and, you know, I know that sounds really dramatic, but it is absolutely how I feel and how, um, I, how important I think it is.
Katie, I'm so glad you said that we're nonpartisan. You know, we are, you know, and, and, and often when people say, you know, um, political leaders stand up, I often never stand up because I don't see this as a political office. I see this as, you know, being a good steward of a school district and being a part of this community. And so, you know, I, I do not like that so much politics is entered into, um, this space because this is about educating and taking care of children. And I think that's what we keep at our forefront, you know, the forefront of what we're doing. Um, I know as, as far as our school district is concerned and our board is that very, you know, their politics is, we keep that outside. Right now, it's all about how do we get our children educated?
Well, Christie, Katie and Miranda, thank you so much for this great conversation. For all of our stories, stlpr.org. Politically Speaking is a product of St. Louis Public Radio, which is part of the University of Missouri-St. Louis. You can follow me on Twitter at Jay Rosenbaum. How can people follow you on Twitter, Kate?
I'm at K G R U M K E, at K G R U M K E.
I don't think any of you have Twitter accounts, but is there any information that you want to provide to parents to learn more about your school district?
Uh, we're on Facebook, Instagram. We are everywhere, uh, Jennings, and go to our website. So, um, they, we definitely are out there on the social media landscape. And that's Jennings.
Same with, same with Parkway.
We have great communication professionals in MRH, mrhschools.net, uh, for, you know, for all the information, whether you're looking for a job or you're, uh, looking for information about your, your kids' education.
Thank you very much. And until next time, so long.